Good evening. My name is Robin Muir. On behalf of League of Women Voters of Kitsap, I want to welcome you to this evening's forum for County Commissioner District Three. This webinar will be recorded by both League of Women Voters Kitsap and BCAT, and will be accessible through our website at LWV-Kitsap.org. BCAT will air their recordings on three consecutive Fridays, October 21st, 28th, and November 4th at 7:00 PM. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes political parties or candidates. The League does take positions on matters of public policy and advocates for those positions after careful study. Formed in the 1920s as an outgrowth of the women's suffrage movement, the League's purpose was and is to this day to educate and inform citizens so that they may more fully participate in our democracy. As a membership organization, we depend on our members to organize and run events such as this. We invite and encourage everyone to become members and help us work on the League's basic tenet, that our form of government depends upon the informed and active participation of its citizens. We would like to acknowledge that our homes and gathering places in present-day Kitsap County are within the ancestral territories of the Suquamish and Skowown peoples, who have lived in harmony with the lands and waterways along Washington Central Sailor Sea for thousands of years. Here, the Suquamish and the Skowown live and protect the water and land of their ancestors for future generations as promised by the Point Elliott Treaty of 1855 and by the Point No Point Treaty of 1855. Joining us this evening are candidates for County Commissioner. This is District Three. We have Katie Walters and Josh Henman. Our rules for the forum are as follows. All candidates are given one and a half minutes to make an opening statement. Following the opening remarks, I will ask questions that have been submitted in advance by the public. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. At the end of the forum, each candidate will have one and a half minutes to make a closing statement. Please keep your eye on the digital timer. If time expires before you finish speaking, please finish your sentence and yield the floor. Each of you has our thanks for stepping up and running for elected office. Please be respectful of each other, refrain from personal attacks, and address your remarks to me as the moderator or the audience. We're going to get started. We're going to start in the order that you appear in the voter's guide. So Katie, you are the first one listed in the guide, so you have the first opening remarks.
All right, great. Thank you, Robin. Thank you so much to the League of Women Voters for putting on this evening's forum and to everyone that's watching at home. My mom was a city commissioner when I was growing up, and I attended League of Women Voter meetings with her when I was in high school and college. So I feel like these are really important conversations. And I am running for County Commissioner because I know I can make a difference. I care deeply about Kitsap and our future. Our family has been in Kitsap for five generations, the deep ties to the shipyard, and I have lived here for over 30 years. And I really feel like this is the best place to raise a family, and I want others to have that same opportunity. I've worked in nonprofits and education for over 30 years. I am currently the Executive Director of Leadership Kitsap, which is our community's nonpartisan civic leadership program. And through that program, I've had the unique opportunity to work with our community's private, public, and nonprofit leaders to create positive change in Kitsap. I also taught many years at Olympic College. Education is going to be key in addressing Kitsap's workforce crisis now and in the future. I have extensive community and board service, including serving as president at the Kitsap Regional Library Board of Trustees, and am currently an active member of the Bremerton Rotary. The main duty of a commissioner is to promote the health, safety, and welfare of our citizens. So I really look forward to using my experience and connections to bring people together, to create solutions, to solve many of our community's challenges, and to really ensure that that decision-making process is transparent and inclusive. Thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to sharing more this evening.
Thank you. Josh?
Good evening. Thanks again to the League of Women Voters for hosting and for everybody tuning in and who will watch it online later. It is great to be with you this evening. I'd never planned on getting into politics. I'm a business leader who turned nonprofit leader and got involved in my community because I look at the community today, and I think that we have some incredible challenges in the community that are going to take action-based solutions to resolve. In addition, I think we have tremendous opportunity, opportunity to build the future that our kids and our grandkids will want to live here to be a part of. It's important to me that we create a future where every single person who lives in Kitsap can thrive, every person who's involved in the community feels that they can achieve their full potential in our schools, in our neighborhoods, and in our workplaces. I think Kitsap is a phenomenal place to raise a family. It's why my wife and I have chosen to settle here. It's why we got involved here. I moved out here to run a foster care agency to be the executive director. During that time, I worked a lot with people who had mental health crisis, people who were struggling with addiction, who needed housing. Some of the biggest issues that we have in our community today are issues that I've dealt with throughout my leadership experience. I think right now that we need somebody who can provide strong leadership for vision for our community, somebody who can strategize for the future. We are so good at being a community that's reactive to problems, but we need to switch our reactivity to be proactive with solutions that are good for every single person in Kitsap County. And so I want to be a part of that team. I have experience doing that work. I look forward to being your commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to start questions, and I'm going to alternate who goes first on each question. These first couple have been driven by recent news and were submitted just today, actually. Josh, you're going to go first on this particular question, and then Katie, you'll follow. Lack of emergency room, basic healthcare, and mental health services increases safety issues in our community. With the increasing challenges to the current private healthcare system in Kitsap County, what can a commissioner do to ensure the healthcare needs in our community are met?
Well, the commissioner can do a couple of different things. The first is to provide leadership alongside our current hospital structure that we have today. I met with Chad Milton yesterday. We had a great conversation about what they're working on at the hospital today. In two years, they're planning on building a 74-bed patient care unit. Next year, they plan on actually opening a unit off Kitsap Way, which is great news. I think some people have been told it wasn't sure that they were going to open it, but they're going to open an emergency clinic. But they do have an inability right now to receive emergency care. We have unsafe staffing levels. Staff morale is low. So there are options. The options of a commissioner are to either A, join alongside Chad Milton, reinforce a connection with getting more nurses to move here and be a part of the team. The second option is to look at a public hospital district. A public hospital district isn't required to be a hospital. It can be all healthcare services, nursing homes, extended homes, mental health clinics, et cetera. So I think those are the two options that a commissioner has to explore. One is leadership and advocating and working alongside our current structure, and the other is to explore, which the commissioners just voted to do as a part of Kitsap Public Health, to explore the community needs and decide where to go.
Katie?
Can you please repeat the question?
I'd be happy to. Lack of emergency room, basic healthcare, and mental health services increases safety issues in our communities. With the increasing challenges to the current private healthcare system in Kitsap County, what can a commissioner do to ensure the healthcare needs in our community are met?
Yeah, I know we are living in some really frustrating times right now. And one of the things that a commissioner can do really is to explore those private-public partnerships as well as support the existing systems. So part of the existing system right now is really supporting our frontline, very strained frontline workers, and how do we get them the support they need? Part of that, I think, a short-term fix is to fix that workforce crisis. To me, that is expanding nursing and medical assisting programs at Olympic College. I know that they're working right now to bring some additional programs to the college. There's already nursing students that want to get in that are not able to get in. As Josh mentioned, there is the opportunity to explore a public hospital district and to bring, again, that public service and public-private industry together for more options for equitable, safe, affordable emergency and urgent care.
Robin, you're muted.
Thank you for letting me know that. I think it's the mantra of the Zoom age, right? Would you be in favor of establishing a public hospital district in Kitsap County? Or would you support another hospital that is not religiously affiliated? And Katie, you will go first on this one.
What I learned today in exploring this topic more, and I have to say, I didn't really understand this very well, is that a public hospital district does not necessarily mean a county hospital. And I really thought that was probably what it was, and maybe most people don't know that. But hospital districts are authorized to deliver any service to help people stay healthy, physical, as well as behavioral health. And like I mentioned, those that are exploring this idea really want to bring a partnership between public service and private industry. And there's talk about more equitable, safe care. So I think this is really interesting, and I would not take it off the table. And I think that there's a movement right now. But again, I think my concern falls for those frontline workers and getting them the support they need right now.
Josh?
Well, I love the step that we took today as a community. The Kitsap Public Health District in their meeting today voted to do a community health needs assessment. It's a great way to be collaborative with our community and creatively explore the options to fill the gaps that exist in our community today. It's no secret in our community that there's a mental health crisis. Some would call it an epidemic. There's no secret that the emergency room is having trouble managing the level of care that's needed. We have people driving in from Jefferson and Mason Counties to get care in Kitsap County. But there are challenges in starting a public hospital district. There's certain funding that St. Michael gets because it's the sole hospital and sole provider in the community. So I think the right step was taken today. Get St. Michael leadership at the table, create an opportunity for a community needs assessment to be done, get the stakeholders in the community to wrap around and actually declare, what do we need? How can we do it well? What are the unintended consequences? What does it look like for us to make this decision? And let that process drive whether or not we start a public hospital district.
Thank you. All right, we're going to pivot now to a different topic. We're going to go to transportation. And Josh, you're going to be the first to answer this question. How do you feel about the transportation options currently available in Kitsap County? What would you do to make sure that all residents are able to get where they need to go reliably, affordably, and on time?
Great question. I think our transportation needs in Kitsap County are great. It comes with a growing, combined with an incredible environment that we don't want to ruin by just putting roads everywhere. Most people I talk to in the community aren't asking for big four- or six-lane highways, but they do want to be able to traverse and get where they need to go. So I think continuing the creativity of things like the shipyard, where you have the worker-driver buses, the addition of Kitsap Transit, and figuring out how do we restore Sunday service, how do we increase foot ferries between communities? How do we increase the fast ferries availability to Seattle? Those things are great options. I think continuing to encourage people using non-motorized means of transportation. But the reality is, in Kitsap, we have a limited geography. The geography is very different. It has lots of hills and lots of water, and so we need to be more creative with transportation solutions that are outside of just the standard vehicle traffic. So public transportation, as well as the foot ferries, would be a great solution to that.
Katie?
Okay, I'm going to need you to repeat one more time.
That's all right. How would you rate the success of Kitsap Transit? I'm sorry. How do you feel about the transportation options currently available in Kitsap County? What would you do to make sure that all residents are able to get to where they need to go reliably, affordably, and on time?
All right, thank you.
You bet.
So what I think about the transportation options in Kitsap County is that we live in a very diverse area, and we have unique transportation. Like, we're one of the areas that we have ferries, so we can transport by water as well as roads and buses. And so the coordination, I think, right now is strained. And I have a son that commuted to Seattle on the fast ferry. And then there's sometimes when workers are getting strained over in Seattle because there isn't the adequate cooperation between the state and local ferry. So I think that's something that we could consider, as well as bringing on more line, more buses. We need to get people to work. And I had conversations with Kitsap Transit. I know that they've had a worker-driver shortage, and that's coming back online. They've hired people. There's incentives. So those are some of our challenges. So we have a little ways to go.
Thank you. All right, continuing in this same topic. Katie, you'll go first. How would you rate the success of Kitsap Transit's Fast Ferry program? Would you like to see it expanded? And if so, what new routes would you like to see?
I find that the fast ferry is very successful. And in fact, I remember I used to take it like years ago, and before it was shut down and brought back. So I'm glad that we have the ferry system, the fast ferry system, because I'm also thinking that it is relieving some traffic on Highway 305. I used to do that commute between Silverdale and Bainbridge daily, and it's easing a little bit of that by having a Kingston Fast Ferry. So I would like to see bringing more on. And I think also a really interesting idea between have transit between Bremerton and Silverdale, bring kind of more back that mosquito fleet idea. And also, I think it would also enhance tourism as well. I think that's one of the aspects of our ferry system that we forget. That is also a big tourist draw for people, bringing them into their community. But anytime we can connect our communities and get people to work, especially the shipyard, without having to take their car, would be beneficial.
Thank you. Josh?
You're on.
I think, thank you. I think the fast ferries have proven to be a wonderful addition to our ferry system here in Kitsap. I mean, they run now from Kingston and Bremerton to downtown Seattle. I believe, if I remember the numbers right, since February, about 15,000 riders have ridden the fast ferry. Their service reliability is 97%, which is pretty incredible when you compare it to the standard ferry traffic that we're experiencing today. I think they have 96% on-time rating for the fast ferries. So if you are an employee in downtown Seattle and you're using the fast ferry for your commute, it gives you a lot of confidence that you can get there on time and get home on time at the end of your day. And I think that's really one of the things that the fast ferry did is for a family person, somebody who goes to work in Seattle and wants to get home to be with their partner, their spouse, their family, they can now count on the fact that they aren't going to be spending two and a half hours or three hours commuting on the ferry, but they can cut that time down to an hour and actually get more family time here in Kitsap.
Okay, next question. Josh, you'll go first on this one. What type of expansion would you support or propose for public transportation in Kitsap County? Is it time to bring back the mosquito fleet to ease congestion on our roadways?
No, I don't know if it's time to bring back the mosquito fleet. I don't think I'm qualified to make that call quite yet. I'll admit that I don't know enough about what that would cost and what that would entail for us to make that decision tonight. What I would say is, I think, you know, research shows that when you can get to communities in 15 minutes or less on public transportation, the ridership will go up and people will utilize it. We currently don't have that in Kitsap because we're such a massive geography. And so I think of the stories of people that I know. I did some nonprofit work with a woman and her family who lived up in Knollwood behind the dealerships in Bremerton, and it would take her an hour and 45 minutes to get from her home to Wincote to go grocery shopping. So she couldn't actually buy frozen food at Wincote to take home because it would thaw by the time she got there. And so we have got to be able to. It especially affects people in poverty when bus transportation is not reliable and it's not quick to get to your homes. So if we want to provide a community where people in poverty can get great jobs, can go to the grocery store, and can take their kids to school, we need to improve our public transportation.
Thank you. Katie?
I believe this question is about bringing back the mosquito fleet.
That, and what kind of expansion would you support or propose for our Kitsap Transit in general?
All right, so I think that expanding the mosquito fleet should be part of our strategic plan as we're preparing for this explosive growth, right? We're planning for 70,000 more residents in the next 20 years. It's definitely something we should take consideration for as we plan for our future and for long-term. Immediate need, though, I believe we really need to get more buses online. We need to be able to get people to work. Those that don't have cars absolutely need to be able to be able to get their families to the doctor, to places. So I think expanding our transportation options is really going to be important.
Thank you. Next question. Katie, you'll go first on this one. Our county population has been growing rapidly. Do you think we have the infrastructure, schools, roads, parks, et cetera, to support this growth? What would you, as a commissioner, do to make sure we protect our quality of life while building new homes and welcoming more residents?
Well, thank you, Robin, for that question. I don't think we're quite ready for that, for our explosive growth yet. And so we really do need to invest in infrastructure ahead of this growth and plan for it and to expand our transit, our roads, our sewer, our water. And current residents shouldn't really be burdened with this cost of growth. We need to have growth pay for growth with impact fees, environmental mitigation fees, and really be thinking outside of the box to keep this density where the density belongs and so that we can preserve the beautiful green spaces and expand our park system. So build where we already have unproductive land. We have opportunities for a lot of infill and putting the residents where the services are as well.
Thank you. Josh?
Yeah, I believe that the statistics say that we grew about 9% in the last 10 years or so as a community, from 250,000 people to the 275 or so thousand people that we have in Kitsap today. And we're projected to keep growing. We're currently 7,000 housing units short in Kitsap County. So we do need to address our infrastructure. The challenge with addressing infrastructure via impact fees, and some of these fees are that those fees actually get passed along to the home buyer, and it becomes very expensive, and we're already struggling with housing affordability. A way to produce more affordable housing is to allow for developers to get a faster track permit time so they can reduce the cost of holding money to be able to get housing in our community. But we do also need to address infrastructure, which is why building downtown in our urban growth areas is so important. More apartments and more condos and townhomes that are interconnected in our deepest core, that will give us more supply, which will actually level out to equal the demand, and more supply in a simple supply-demand economy scenario will actually reduce the cost of housing, and we can keep that in our main infrastructure base.
Thank you. Following up on the last question, what do you think can be done to improve infrastructure, mostly roadways, to help deflect some of the issues associated with rapid growth? Josh, you're first on this.
Well, I think it sounds very similar to the last question. I think for us to be able to improve our infrastructure, I mean, some of it is just simply, we, Public Works, if you look at their budget currently today, their budget is very constrained over the last five years or so. As I've been helping serve on the Budget Committee year after year, they have been eating through their operational budget, and it's getting now to the point where they're not going to be able to afford to do all the work that we need to continue to improve our infrastructure. So some of what we need to do is actually to look and evaluate, how can we refund and properly fund the Public Works Department in Kitsap County? If we can fund the Public Works Department effectively, then they can also begin to manage the infrastructure. So some of our limitations are simply that they don't have the funding. A part of that funding goes to the Sheriff Department. The Sheriff Department gets $2.9 million of the taxpayer dollars on property taxes that goes into the Public Works Department, actually goes to the sheriff. And so the Public Works needs that money to balance out. The sheriff needs that money to keep us safe. So we have to figure out a solution for how to fund either one of those to get proper infrastructure built.
Thank you. Katie?
Please repeat.
Yes, we're just kind of following up, and you can elaborate on the from before. What do you think can be done to improve infrastructure, mostly roadways, to help deflect some of the issues associated with rapid growth?
All right, so with road race, so development that is environmentally sensitive, economically viable, and community-oriented and sustainable is super important, including our roadways. And so if we can promote compact, transit-oriented urban communities, that would also keep the transportation in the urban core and also creating these walkable, bikeable neighborhoods, thinking of community and buildings, communities around with each other. I think part of the way that we can help support roads is really with those partnerships. I think we're talking about the Gorst Coalition and that whole road mess. I think a lot of the funding can be there from the federal government, especially in this current infrastructure package. So really looking at those opportunities for writing grants and obtaining some of that extra money beyond just what we have within our community.
Thank you. All right, next question. Proposed new development is taking place in downtown Silverdale that will mean the elimination of Linder Fields. How would you mitigate the loss of those fields?
Okay, well, I'm not sure if we, the reason that there's lots of those fields, but we just gained beautiful fields just right up the street with the Central Kitsap High School and Middle School. So I think the benefit of the opportunity to get a catalyst to redevelop downtown Silverdale, and I know there's a loss of those fields, but we have beautiful new fields just right up the street as well as at Clahalia and Olympic High School. So I think the benefit of the opportunity to restore Strawberry Creek and bring in some mixed-use buildings and really start revitalizing Old Town Silverdale is one of the things that's going to be really important. And I think it was going to be a huge community benefit to us. And we have fields. We also have fields at the fairgrounds.
Thank you. Josh?
Yeah, I think one of the quickest solutions would be up off of Dickey Road. We have the soccer fields there already, and there's already space where we can expand the fields that are there. Linder Field only has a small amount of space. We have that land already up off of Dickey, and so we can expand that and create more opportunity for people to go there. I am so excited for what they're doing down on Strawberry Creek. And the redevelopment and restoring that, getting the salmon run back into that creek is going to be such a wonderful gift to our community and a great way to care for our environment. The plan, if you've seen it, and what they're hoping to do is this mixed commercial use with a park-like feel, really centering in on the creek being a masterpiece part of their plan to be restored and be able to be viewed, sat by, walked through, and to be able to enjoy that once again. And so I'm excited about that redevelopment. That will also bring some new housing. It will be in the urban core. It will have an opportunity to have shops and things on the bottom side, and then apartments and condos above it. It's going to be a wonderful addition to the community.
Thank you. All right, next question. With Kitsap County's rapidly aging population, please share your ideas for supporting older adults in maintaining their independence and well-being as they age in place.
Wow, what an important question. And it gets more important, too, because we're in this time as a country where Medicare is actually cutting the rates that they're going to pay. And so in Kitsap County, when so many of our people who live here are 65 years or older, and they rely upon that pay, that's one of the conversations that actually comes back to that earlier topic of the public hospital district. One of the things a public hospital district can actually do is put in place elderly care homes and facilities and memory care facilities. And so that would be taxpayer subsidized. So I think anytime it's taxpayer subsidized, taxpayers should be the people who vote and decide whether that's something we want. But we are in a spot where we have a very aging population. They need help. And so we currently don't have the resources in Kitsap County to adequately care for the number of people we have right now who are aging. And so we do need to either A, incentivize getting more elderly care facilities here, B, talk about a public hospital district that could provide some of those facilities for the people in our community.
Perfect. Thank you. Katie?
One of the ways that we can really encourage our seniors to age in place, and I think this is such an important topic. I am hearing from seniors. In fact, I was at Bainbridge Senior Center this morning, visiting with residents and listening to the concerns. A lot of the concerns have to do around the property tax. Many of them, their property taxes are more than their house payment or more than what their house payment was. They're on restricted budgets. They didn't budget for their houses to be assessed so high. And so now people who have lived in the same house are not able to stay there. They're not able to age in place. One of my ideas would be to really go back and look at some of the senior exemptions. One of my ideas would be to really go back and look at some of the the senior exemptions, the senior disability exemptions. So that maybe we raise that minimum rate. Right now it's very low. I I don't have the number in front of me. I believe it starts at like. Thirty-six thousand to forty-two thousand in income. And it's something that we should look at now to raise that to raise that threshold. So more people qualify for that that. Not discount, but the, oh no, I'm out of time, but so more people qualify for some of that relief.
Thank you. Um, next question. Would you like to see Silverdale become an incorporated city with its own mayor and city council? What would be some of the pros and cons as you see it? And that goes to Katie first.
So you know what? Eventually, I would love Silverdale to become its own city and have its own mayor and be represented that way. I think that it's been part of the comprehensive plan, the current twenty twenty thirty-six comprehensive plan. That it become a city as well as Kingston. However, at this moment, this moment in time. I don't, well, if the if the citizens want it, right, the Silverdale would have to vote. It's really not up to the commissioners. If the citizens want it, I would support it. But knowing that it really in twenty ten, I think was the last time it came up, it was shot down. Rightly, that. Our rate of growth, it seems inevitable, but last time it was on the ballot, it was soundly rejected. And I think we'd really really just on that issue need to check back with the borders voters. And I would support the citizens if if that's what they wanted. But right now it just wouldn't be fiscally responsible. We just. We have a lot of infrastructure to put in front in first and so not going to be, not not in the near future, but eventually.
Josh?
I'm for whatever voters decide. So will I support it? If the voters say we're doing it, then yes. Will I support it if they say no? Of course I will. It is, I think these type of decisions need to be voter driven whenever it's concerning that. But here's the question that I think people are really asking behind the scenes, which is, are we getting enough service in Silverdale from the county? Are we able to have an identity for Silverdale or are we just going to be a big box community? People don't want to just be a big box community. They want to have somebody from law enforcement show up at their house if they call nine-one-one. And they need help. And right now they're worried because it's county that they're not going to get the level of services that they need. The the truth is this, gardens grow. And so when you tend to garden and you make it beautiful and you pick the weeds and you spend time on it, then it will flourish. And Silverdale is our garden. We need to care for it well. We need to tend it well. We need to ensure that we create a brand identity, which I think we're going to start with Old Town. Creating this brand identity and people will love it so much. I think the question about incorporation will become less and less.
Thank you. All right. Currently, the average county family making the median income cannot afford. The median price detached single family home in Kitsap County. We often hear about missing middle housing. What is your understanding of the term missing middle housing? And what can the county do to make more housing available to those making an average income? And that goes to Josh first.
Yeah, missing middle housing is this, the cost of a house that's in the average lane, right? This house that's between four hundred fifty thousand or four hundred thousand and six hundred fifty thousand. In that lane where people who make a average salary of eighty thousand dollars is the average median salary in Kitsap can afford to buy a home. And right now there's just no incentive for a builder to build a house that's cheaper than seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. It costs them so much in impact fees and permit fees that to build a twenty thousand or two thousand square foot house versus a twenty-five. Square, twenty-five hundred square foot house is almost no difference in cost. And so we need to incentivize builders and developers to build things that are affordable. And on top of that, we need to ensure that they have a incentive, the incentivized method is to an owner occupied unit. So I have proposed a plan to D C D where we would speed up permits for people building a hundred houses or more at one time. They agree that the houses are a minimum of eighteen hundred square feet. They say they sell twenty percent of them to owner occupied units for four hundred thousand or less. And we guarantee their permit in forty-five days.
Thank you. Katie?
My understanding of of middle housing really is. The opportunity for first time homeowners. And I know when. My husband and I were twenty-five. He worked at the shipyard. I was working at Olympic College and we bought our first home. That is just not a possibility for my boys that are like my son that's twenty-five right now. And so the middle, missing middle housing is an opportunity for people to get into that market. And so that would be duplexes, fourplexes, cottages, the cottage villages. And those things are just are missing right now. There's a lot, I think there should be more opportunity for us to replace. Some of the homes that are falling apart, that we can have that piece of property. And incentivize putting on, putting duplex or fourplex in that or in these new neighborhoods. Fill in with some of these duplexes or townhomes and condominiums. That opportunity would be really the opportunity to fill in some of this missile meeting. So more people have the opportunity.
Thank you.
The minute goes really fast.
Sometimes and other times. Back to the missing middle, Daniel Perelik wrote a book called Missing Middle Housing, and it's really quite interesting. And I recommend it to if you haven't read it. Moving on.
I've read it.
Places in the Salish Sea, Kitsap County has become a target for larger developers building ever larger and more subdivisions. There is almost nothing right with this loss of natural systems, which contributes to climate change and compromises the quality of life. That residents came to West Sound to enjoy. K R C C's goal for future development is transit oriented, housing near services and transit options. This is not happening. What is your plan to correct this? And Katie, you get to go first on this.
That's a big question and I really do encourage upzoning near areas near transit. I think Bremerton has done a good job of upzoning near the ferries. I think we need to look at for our other communities. And really have the opportunity to, as we're planning out our community. To build that in, build, build that into part of our plan. To have the transit centers near all of the the building. But what's going to happen is right now, we don't have a master plan for Silverdale. All of this building is going on and there isn't really a plan. So what we really need is to have a coordinated effort where we bring everyone together so we can discuss what we want. The ports, the small business owners, the the schools. As and have a dedicated community planner for our central core so that we can actually make that happen. So that we're actually able to put this density near transit.
Thank you, Josh.
I think some of the work that we're doing right now is such a great example we want to see going forward. We have this new transit center coming to the top of Ridge Stop. We put a new transit center in East Bremerton. Where all the apartments are being built across the street and we have, so we are learning. I think we're actually starting to implement some of these really great solutions that's doing exactly what's being asked. So whenever you can combine these transit centers and housing, you're going to see flourishing take place. But we have to do this in cooperation with increasing our transit availability from the public sector. So it's one thing to put a bus transfer station in next to a bunch of homes. But if those buses don't run often enough that people can take them to work or school or to go grocery shopping and get home on time. Then you didn't actually accomplish the purpose that was designed. So the twenty twenty-four comp plan that's going to determine our next twenty years of vision for Kitsap is the right time and the right place to address this issue. This should be a topic that is on the conversation block and ensure that as we're developing more and and increasing our transit. In the comp plan, we address this exact issue.
Thank you. Next question. How would you address homeless encampments in public places and parks? What proposals would you make to help homeless individuals find more permanent housing? Josh, you're first on that.
Yeah, what a, what a incredible conversation this is. One is I want us to be a community that has empathy, that recognizes that when someone is homeless, they're a person. And they need help and they're, I don't want us to ever lose sight of the fact that this is a real person with a story and a life experience who's sitting in front of us. And I think that can sometimes get lost in the conversation. But on the second, on the other side, I think we have to establish as a community, do we want to have a. A common shared set of values across the community. I think what people are actually less upset around homeless encampments. They're more upset that there's a massive drug use, that it's turned into danger, a danger to walk along the Clear Creek Trail. That people have barbecues out in the woods and they're starting fires. And so we do need a safe place for them to go. We just built Pendleton Place. That was a great private public partnership with Kitsap Mental Health as well as the government. And then so some more creative housing like that, housing first is the best model I've seen, but it has to come along with a behavioral component. Where people are expected to actually live up to the community values that we've declared in Kitsap.
Thank you, Katie?
Can you please repeat it so make sure?
How would you address homeless encampments in public places and parks? What proposals would you make to help homeless individuals find more permanent housing?
Well, I I think the county is doing a very good job right now in in addressing those encampments. And I know people are like super frustrated because it just doesn't seem to be moving along as fast as we like. And but it is making a difference. The hiring of the heart coordinator, Jared Moran. He's done a really amazing job in really looking at the individual, giving. Each homeless person has a caseworker in which they're identifying. Behavioral health, the employment and housing is all part of the services that they can look for for that individual. And and then get them into the services and into housing. It's very slow. But it's working instead of moving the the problem down down the line. And but there's lots of frustrations that come along with that as well. And that we all need to come together to work with. One of the things that we're doing on, oh, I'm going to run out of time. But it's addressing it, addressing it as a whole. It's 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 not acceptable for all of these people. It's not safe for them to be. It's not safe for them to be in our parks. So we do need to help and continue moving that process forward.
Thank you. Uh, this, moving on, this is a different topic. What type of support would you be in favor of for small businesses still reeling from the pandemic? And Katie, you're first on that.
Some of the the support, I think. There are some really interesting grant opportunities that are still available. I know right now Representative Tara Simmons is working with the Greater Kitsap Chamber on a grant for those small businesses. That did not receive the PPP funding and looking towards specifically women owned, people of color businesses as well. So there's still some opportunity to help those businesses. I also think shopping local is very important as we're heading into the holidays. Let's support those small business owners. The Chamber is doing a really great job of helping to promote small businesses. We need to support them. We need to to, instead of using the. Instead of clicking an Amazon cart, to really think of how we can support our local businesses to keep them in business. And and to flourish and bring in some more opportunities. There's a, there's a lot of. Incubator ideas going on with KETA, with KCR to really to support our entrepreneurs as well. And to to keep people working.
Thank you, Josh.
Well, the number one thing affecting every single small business today is the ability to find a qualified employee who wants to work. And so our continued effort as a community to do community job fairs, workforce development, to put in touch employers with people who want to work. Is one of the steps to helping people recover. The second is as a community, we could begin to highlight small businesses and working with chambers, working with rotary clubs and lines clubs. And the service clubs in our communities to start to highlight the small businesses in our community who are doing great work. I think I find so interesting, I often, people are unaware of incredible small businesses in our community. I was just talking to someone yesterday and she said, have you heard about the new Vietnamese restaurant in Silverdale? And I had not heard about it. And so our family is going to try to go and and check it out and eat there. And I think the more that we can start conversations about the small businesses. You know, really it is a word of mouth market. And so we are responsible, the the citizens of Kitsap, the people who live here, to spread the word about the small businesses in our community doing great work and then to support them.
All right, our last question. What will you do to connect with constituents in District Three to learn about their concerns? And Josh, you're first on this one.
Well, one of the things I've been doing is I've been going to every single public event possible. I think both of us have and just being present in the community. But a unique thing that I've done that I have just found that has made a big difference for a lot of people is I've been giving people my phone number. And my email address. I've been actually responding to people when they email. And I've heard from so many people, I, it's been so long that we felt like we could get in touch with the community leader. And we desire to be able to have a conversation, to have coffee. I've I've drank way more coffee than I've ever drunk before. I'm going to be awake until Christmas time. Because I've been just having coffee with community members and I think people want to be heard. So I think a huge opportunity for communication is via social media. It's so hard when people learn about what's happening in the community from a neighbor or a friend who happens to be in the know. Rather than having a central point of communication as a community. We have communication people on staff at the county. And I'm surprised at the lack of communication that exists because we employ those positions. We have to improve our community communication if we want to have a community that is involved in what we're doing.
Thank you, Katie.
Well, I too have been loving being out there and seeing people. I've been, I I feel like I've already, I've been on this for years and that I've already been out there. But I think there's a few things that a county commissioner could do to increase communication with constituents. One would be to hold office hours in a centralized area. I would suggest that the new Silverdale Library to be accessible to those that want to talk to you in person. And and there's going to have a coffee oasis, so there could be a coffee element as well. I think also improving the county website is going to be really vital. I find that it's very. It's it's difficult to have to navigate the county website. There really needs to be a coordinated effort for coordination for communication. And as part of that would be to have a. Easy access point. Also, I think there needs to be some improvement with Kitsap one. Maybe it's a staffing thing, but it's really hard to even get through right now to to access your your government. So office hours and and improved internal communication as well.
Thank you. All right, we're ready for our final statement. So Katie, you get to go first on this. You have a minute and a half.
Josh first. Was Jess supposed to go first?
I'm sorry, yes, Josh.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said Katie.
I I think I was mistaken. It should be.
Well, I I would love to go. Well, thank you so much for hosting the conversation, for having us in an evening to spread, just make aware the community of. Who we both are and the answers to our questions. I just, I can't thank you enough. I appreciate the opportunity. I've lived in Kitsap for over ten years. I fell in love with the community, but I grew up right next door in Pierce County. So I'm a local kid who wants the best for our community. I want my kids and my grandkids to grow old here. I want to retire here. We bought a house that we thought we would retire in with a plan to stay. But we have a lot of things to improve on in Kitsap, a lot of opportunities that lie in front of us. I want to be a part of bringing a trade school to Kitsap, expanding the partnership either with Olympic College and our trade school that we have for high school students. Or, you know, building something out with Circuit of the Northwest. There's an opportunity to be able to train up this next generation of trade workers in Kitsap County. And everybody I'm talking to who plumbers and electricians need that. I think there's an opportunity for us to improve our public safety. To figure out a better way to fund our sheriff departments and our court systems to be able to properly manage the crime in our community. Small business owners are losing money every single day because people are walking out of their stores with stuff in their hands and they can do nothing about it. Our fiscal forecast is not as great as it once was. The county is actually expecting less income next year than they have this year. I have the skills, the ability and the knowledge to be able to help lead us into the future. Despite the fiscal forecast where we can recognize our opportunity and still have growth for our community.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you so much again to the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum and for those who are who are viewing at home. I'm really passionate about fostering and empowering more women leaders in our community. And I decided the best way to do that really was was to to lead by example. So that's why I'm here. I'm a seasoned executive in the nonprofit sector. And I'm an expert in creating civic engagement and collaboration. I've been doing that for years. I've been deeply involved in our community and I I really know, I really know Kitsap. And I I do believe that this is one of the most important local elections since calling Kitsap home in the last thirty years. We're in the middle of a worker shortage, which I mean, that is huge. It's affecting everything. And a behavioral health crisis and a housing crisis. And honestly, life just costs more right now. So who we elect is really important. And I have the experience and the relationships to build partnerships and bring people together to really find solutions. And I want to work with you to develop community-based solutions for sustainable growth and development that really balances our beautiful natural environment and our high quality of life. So, um, I spent decades in educating and empowering community leaders and, uh, and I know I can bring that to our community. So thank you again for this evening. Really appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you. And, um, I think, uh, the League of Women Voters is always willing to help, uh, spread the word or get out information from the county council at any time. So we, we are there and that is our job to, to inform. Uh, once again, I want to thank you both for attending and taking the time to join us this evening and have, and for your thoughtful answers to all of the questions. We think a well-informed electorate is critical to our democracy events such as this or one way to learn about those who choose to run for elected office. So here's our PSA. The general election is November 8th. Ballots will be mailed October 21st, which is Friday, and the drop boxes will be opened as well on those same, on that same day. Be sure to drop your ballot off by November 8th at 8:00 PM or have it postmarked by eight, November 8th, if you choose to mail your ballot. Information on candidates and issues can be accessed at vote411.org or in your voter pamphlet, which you should have received in the mail. The pamphlet can also be accessed online at kitsappgov.com/auditor. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of Kitsap, I would like to encourage everyone to vote and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Good night.
Good night.